Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Senator Mr. White wanted to say that.
How'd you get over there?
No, 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 it's a problem.
Thank you. Hey, nice tan.
Full crowd up here tonight. When... As Kathy, as you may know, have you been briefed on the procedure that John's leaving? Brian's gonna run the public hearing. John's gonna sit in the audience because he wants to testify first, then he's leaving. So one, I would prefer you, but... But I don't, I don't care. Good evening, everybody. I've got six o'clock. In order to avoid any potential conflict, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Supervisor Fisher if there's no objections.
Right, good evening, everyone. We'll begin the meeting here with a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all for joining. The first thing on the agenda tonight is a joint public hearing with the plan commission and the town board. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing before the joint plan commission and town board at the town hall on Thursday, April 9th, 2015, at 6:00 PM to consider the following matter. This is ordinance number 2015-02. An ordinance to repeal and recreate Title 13 entitled zoning, Chapter 2 entitled general provisions, Section 13-2-5 entitled site regulations subsection 13-2-5, parenz A, close parenz, entitled building must be on a lot. And the second part is Section 13-2-9 entitled conditional uses, subsection 13-2-9, parenz small i, close parenz, entitled conditional use is permitted, subsection 13-2-9, parenz small i, close parenz, parenz 16, close parenz, entitled multifamily unit, and section 13-3-1 entitled establishment of districts, amendments to the Town of Waukesha Municipal Code. I think as a place to start here, I'm gonna ask Planner Barcheck if he would spend just a quick moment to orient everyone and give us all an overview on what these proposed ordinance changes entail. Would you do that, please?
Thank you Supervisor Fisher. We have three ordinance amendments that are before the plan commission and the board tonight. In the ordinance, they're identified as Section 1, Section 2, and Section 3. Section 1 and Section 3, in order of the ordinance, are in respect to the Fred Lathers development that has been going on in the town since, I think, 2010. We do have a representative from fiduciary here tonight that'll, in a few minutes here, give us a more overview of the history on the project. But we have been working, or since I've been on board, staff has been working with fiduciary on their, on the Lathers development. And we're at a point now where they want to submit for a review of their preliminary plat and then following would be the final plat. They are looking to do the development through a planned unit development within our ordinance. In working with both the county and also Attorney Macy, we did notice that two areas in our code did not necessarily match what the developer was looking to prepare. The first being in Section 13-2-5, which is the site regulations. Currently, without necessarily having the development concept in front of you, the east side of the Lathers property is more of a conventional, single-family development. They're all individual lots with common open space. The west side of the development is more of a single-family condominium development where the building pads are all on one lot, they're not on individual lots. And that is based on the site parameters for that area. So, working with Attorney Macy, we had, saw that in our code, the interpretation is that for residential districts, which would include the planned unit development, that one could interpret the code to mean that you can only have one principal building on a lot. Again, in this case, through the PUD, the developer, at least for that portion of the development, is looking to do a condominium, so we're gonna have more than one building on a lot. So in order to review that part of the development, we felt that we need to make an amendment to our ordinance. And therefore, that is the reasoning for the amendment, which you see and read and underline in Section 13-2-5, which talks about that. In residential districts, every building shall be located, or one principal building on a lot shall be located, except as authorized through a conditional use permit for multifamily units per Section 13-2-9, subparen 16, a residential planned unit development per Section 13-2-9, subparen 22, and senior housing per Section 13-2-9, subparen 25. So that is the discussion, or the general overview with regard to the amendments for Section 1. I'll skip over Section 2 real quick, and I'll go to Section 3. This is Section 13-3-1, which talks about the establishments of the zoning districts. And at the bottom, there's a note that talks about that within the Town of Waukesha, certain lands and waters, water areas that lie within the Waukesha County designated floodland and shoreline district, that those lands revert to, or we use the Waukesha County shoreline and floodplain protection ordinance when reviewing those. What has happened over the last two years is we had a new court case that came out that involved the property owner and the Town of Eagle. The result of that court case basically said that now local communities do not have concurrent jurisdiction when reviewing development that falls within the county shoreline and floodplain protection ordinance. So what happened is that we do have some parcels, and fiduciary, the Fred Lathers project happens to be one, that part of the development is within the Town of Waukesha and within our jurisdiction of our zoning code, and the other half of the development is within the Waukesha County shoreline and floodplain protection ordinance. The county feels that under their code, when they would review the development, that their interpretation of the code is that they can look at the development in its entirety, they don't necessarily only have to focus on their portion within the shoreline jurisdiction because ultimately their ordinance allows for input from the local community. So they feel that through that flexibility, that they can look at the development in its entirety. Our code, however, tends to be more restrictive, and it basically says that whatever is within our jurisdiction of our zoning is what we can look at, and that unfortunately, under the new court case, the power of us looking beyond that, or looking to the lands that are within the shoreline jurisdiction have been removed from our authority. We have spoke with the county, and we have showed them this proposed language, and they are on board with it. So what it says is that lots that are partially within the jurisdiction of Waukesha County shoreline and floodplain protection ordinance, and partially within their jurisdiction of the Town of Waukesha, the Town of Waukesha shall review the use, building location, and area regulations for the entire lot, but then only regulate that portion of the lot within the jurisdiction of the Town of Waukesha accordingly. So what this means is that we do have a potential development that'll be coming forward, where the shoreline jurisdiction line actually goes through building pads, goes through the buildings, cuts the property in half. So if we would apply our ordinance and our requirements, we could only look at the density, or we could only calculate the density for the lands that are within our jurisdiction, not necessarily the entire lot. So because of the legislation that was passed, or the court decision that was passed, it makes it difficult for communities such as the Town of Waukesha to look at some of these more complex parcels. So by adding this language, ultimately what it does is it allows us now to look at the property in its entirety. We can look at the use of the property in its entirety, we can look at calculating the density for the property in its entirety, but then when we go to look at the regulations, offsets, setbacks, et cetera, we're again only gonna be looking at the portion that's within the town. With that, I'll pause real quick to look at Attorney Macy to see if I've misstated any of that, because I know that, I don't know if the plan commission and the board really has all the history on the court case that was, was, or came before, say, probably a year or so ago.
No, I think you've accurately stated it all. I think we do have to add a couple of other history items, and fiduciary may add these themselves. When your planner and I started here, we were told that there was an ordinance drafted in underconsideration. Now whether it ever came to the plan commission or the board, we don't know, we don't have that history. But we inherited an ordinance that Attorney De La Mora wrote the first draft of to accomplish most of what is being done by this. It was their determination that condominium developments such as being proposed, multiple single-family on one lot or parcel was not allowed in your code. So that determination was made by others. We concur with that jurisdiction, or that determination, we don't disagree with it, and that's really one of the things that we, that had to, was already written in another ordinance and has to be addressed if you wish to have this type of development. And you know, you already have this type of development, and again, you'll correct me, now you can correct me, in the senior housing planned unit development, this is already allowed, correct?
The senior housing was just done through a straight CU, it wasn't done through the PUD.
But it allowed, but that CU allows this. We have no similar tool in the code to allow anything but. So you, some of you, or your predecessors made a determination that under a CU, you could have multiple buildings and, and, and then we also know that there was a, you have multifamily, you don't have any that I know of, but multifamily in your codes allowed. But the concept that they proposed, so our predecessors worked on this, hopefully with you, and that you knew about it, if not, we're here to brief you. And then the second one he talked about was strictly because of the court case. We don't know how to read the code now that we don't have concurrent jurisdiction. So we tried to make a very simple fix that has been presented to you so that we can read the code and deal with the issue of looking at the whole lot when trying to make a determination. I wanna make it very clear, though, so no one's confused, we're not approving any development tonight. This only gives them the opportunity to apply, because under the current code, as was determined by Attorney De La Mora, they couldn't even apply. Does that make sense? So they may come back if this is approved by yourselves and the county and apply for their development, and they're here to speak because they're the petitioner, but we're trying to give you a full and complete background on how this got here. So that's those two sections. And then I think you wanna talk to the third section.
And then the last section, or in the way that's sitting in the ordinance, Section 2, is entitled the conditional use for the multifamily. As we've been going through planner appointments, discussions that we've had at staff meetings, the modifications tonight that are before you with the planned unit development, it provides some good flexibility for residential development within the town. Also, the modification that the town made to the conditional use for senior housing a few years back for the Berkshire development allowed higher density for senior housing. When we looked at the multifamily unit section, we didn't necessarily see the flexibility in there. It was really written for a duplex to happen within the town, and then if you were adjoining the city of Waukesha, you might be able to do more than one duplex if you could hook up to sewer and water. So what we did is we took a look at this section, and we made some revisions to it, again as a instrument to have in our toolbox, that as development comes forward, specifically looking at developments that are at our borders, that when people meet with us and get to understand our ordinance and realize that they can't necessarily get the densities that they may want, or they may envision, we run the risk or the potential of them annexing to the surrounding communities. So again, there's no per se development in place, or a application that we have in front of us, but we thought that it made some sense to at least look at this section to have it as another tool within our toolbox. So what we did is we made, the first revision was to 16B, where it solely limited the use of the multifamily that are in areas contiguous to the city of Waukesha, because I think that we have areas that, you know, could be contiguous to the city of New Berlin, so we didn't necessarily know why it was contiguous only to Waukesha. And area C and D is where we kind of separated what are the parameters if you're looking to do a multifamily unit on private, septic, and well, and then what might be the parameters for multifamily if you have the option to hook up to municipal sewer and water. So under C, if you're just doing a multifamily on private sewer and water, you can do up to one, two-unit structure on a lot. The unit for a one-bedroom would be 900, for a two-bedroom, it'd be 1,000 square feet, for a three-bedroom, it'd be 1,000. Minimum open space would be based on the underlying zoning. The floor area ratio would be one and a half times the required underlying zoning district, and then the minimum lot area and the minimum average width would be one and a half times the required underlying zoning district. Most of this language is just repetitive from the existing code as it stands now. D is where we looked at, you know, in those limited circumstances where you may have a piece of property in the Town of Waukesha, but could get sewer or water from an adjoining community, what could the development potentially look like? So here, we're saying that if you wanna do more than one, two-unit structure, or more than two units per structure, you have to follow these requirements. And the first is that it would have to have both municipal sewer and water provided to it. The size of the units would remain the same, so again, the one-bedroom would be 900 square feet, two-bedroom, 1,000, three-bedroom would be 1,100. Looking at the densities that were approved for the senior housing, we looked at that potentially if you have sewer and water, you could have a density of 15 dwelling units per acre. You know, and again, that was looking at, that could just be one building, could be one apartment building for the units, or could be a series of duplexes that are clustered together. The minimum open space required would be 40%, and if your property had any C1 lands within it, you could use up to 20% of those C1 lands to be included in your calculation for open space. And then the minimum floor area ratio shall be two times the required underlying zoning district. For the disposal, the mess, the method of the disposal would have to be approved by the state of Wisconsin and/or Waukesha County. And with regard to parking, we said that each unit shall provide a minimum of one attached or detached garage and a minimum of one surface parking stall, and that the location and arrangement of the attached or detached garages is subject to the approval of the town board upon recommendation of the town plan commission. Items GH and I are part of our traditional site plan review, so we didn't necessarily know that, necessarily feel that they had to be repeated. So that's the general overview of the ordinances before you. If it's okay with you Supervisor Fisher, again, we do have a representative from fiduciary here that can give us a little bit more background on the Lathers property, a few issues.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, as you know, the town chairman stepped down because of a potential conflict, and he's in the audience, but he wishes to leave, so he's asked for, he's told me he'd like to speak first so that there's no potential conflict, and then he can leave. You don't give up your First Amendment rights just because you're the chairman, and you, so he does have the right to speak at the public hearing, but as you know, my opinion has been that if you don't need to speak, then you should remove yourself. If you need to speak, you should speak, and then remove yourself. And so if there's no objection, I don't know that he needs to hear fiduciary's presentation if we could let him go first.
My suggestion, first of all, thank you to Planner Barcheck and to you Attorney Macy for giving us the background and history and overview of this matter. If I could, I'd like to spend just a real quick minute, do a couple of housekeeping things. After that, I think it'd be appropriate to let Chairman Merrick speak first, and then we'll move forward from there. But the housekeeping thing, so everybody is on the same footing and knows where we're headed, I'm gonna actually read this, but Section 2-3-14 entitled procedure at public hearings from our town ordinances is the guide by which the rest is public hearing will proceed. And it reads as follows, "Following procedure shall be used at public hearings conducted by the town board. And item A is chairperson will read the notice of hearing." We did that at the beginning. B, "The chairperson then shall call on those persons who wish to speak for the proposition. Each person wishing to speak for the proposition shall give his or her name and address." C, "Each person speaking on behalf of the proposition shall be limited to a reasonable time as set by the board." We'll address that momentarily. D, "The chairperson shall then call on those persons who wish to oppose the proposition." E, "Each such person wishing to speak in opposition to the proposition shall give her, his or her name and address and shall also be limited." F, "Any person wishing to speak in rebuttal to any statements made, may, with the permission of the chairperson, do so, provided, however, such rebuttal statement shall be limited to three minutes by any one individual." G, "When the chairperson in his discretion..." Uh, G, when the chairperson in his discretion is satisfied that the proposition has been heard, he, she shall announce the fact that the hearing is concluded. Uh, that's what the ordinance says. I would just add to that, just as a reminder to everybody, this public hearing is not a debate, it's not an interrogation, uh, it's an opportunity to, uh, provide some time for, uh, the public to provide comment, input and suggestions to the Plan Commission and to the board, um, which is something that is, is, is very much wanted to hear from you. Um, quickly, just, uh, another housekeeping thing or two, um, would kind of remind you the, uh, procedure that I just read speaks kind of in the singular to the proposition. This is really kind of a multi, um, part proposition, if you will, it's really three parts of it. Some of them perhaps a bit interrelated, but three parts to it. I would inquire at this point in time, I guess in a couple of different, um, manners, one of which would be whether there is a prerogative on behalf of any Plan Commission member or board member to limit the amount of, uh, time for speaking. And I think, uh, if somebody's prepared to put such restriction, ought to think just a bit about, uh, whether, um, that is to be applied in its entirety or whether we let people speak to each of these different portions of proposition for a given period of time. And I don't know, there Attorney Macy, whether you have any comments about that? Is it appropriate for us to conduct the public hearing and let people speak for all of these propositions or against them? Or somebody may be in favor of one and opposed to another? Do you have any advice as to how we ought to do that? Should we try to take them one at a time and I realize that might fall apart a bit? Do you have any suggestions for us?
No, I think if they're in favor of any of them, they should come up and speak. And if they're opposed to them, they can either speak later on a different one or make that comment at that time.
So, we'll kind of go with the flow as it comes. Is there any desire, uh, on anyone's behalf to limit, uh, the amount of time for individuals to speak?
I think, uh, you can say, yeah, you're late.
You want to put that in the form of a motion or is that a motion?
I think, I think that needs to be done by a member of the town board. I think the ordinance calls for that to be a member of the town board.
You object if Supervisor Dur does that motion? We get to the same place.
So, I would make a motion that we limit the discussion to each of the changes in each section to three minutes. So, that would mean that for the changes in each section, a person would have an opportunity to speak for three minutes.
Okay, is that clear to everybody and is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All right, we got two seconds, that's a second and a third, that's good enough. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that motion passes, uh, we'll proceed and I think as we indicated, uh, Chairman Merrick, if you desire to speak to the motion, we'll accord you that privilege and then you can depart.
Thank you. John Merrick, West two thirty-four, South, West two three six, South forty-five twenty-six, Whispering Hills Court. I'm before you this evening as a private citizen and landowner in the town of Waukesha. I am the owner of twenty-five acres in the fabled two hundred and eighty-eight acres of land. Some of the amendments that you will be reviewing tonight could affect the land that I own and therefore I am stepping aside on these issues to make certain there is no conflict. One of the reasons I purchased this property was to keep it in the town of Waukesha. I would suppose most other buyers would take immediately the easy road and annex the land to one of any three of the adjoining communities. I am not. As long as I own this property, it will remain in the town, add to our tax base, reducing the burden on all ta- on all town residents. This land can be developed in our borders. For others to comment otherwise is preposterous and offensive. It is that very attitude that has cost the town dearly and lost land. The town should embrace those who choose to build within our borders rather than, and treat them as partners rather than adversaries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we will, uh, proceed for any person who wishes to speak in favor of the proposition. And again, as Supervisor Dur is aptly pointed out and, and Planner Barcheck reviewed for us, there really are three, uh, different ordinance areas that are being considered. So, anyone who would like to speak to any one of those in favor of the proposition, please come forward, give us your name and address and proceed.
Good evening, my name is Craig Raditz. I'm with Fiduciary Real Estate Development, seven eighty-nine North Water Street, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Um, pleasure to be in front of you. Um, I think Attorney Macy and Jamie did an excellent job of putting the bookends on this and Jamie, we talked about laying out, uh, it's kind of impromptu, but it's very natural for me as having lived the process here and there's about half of you as I look around, Alan, Bob and Dan, we're here and, uh, I think a critical time, which was really early two thousand and twelve, summer of two thousand and twelve. But for an overview, our firm, uh, we knew Dr. Lathers and their family were a residential development firm throughout Milwaukee and the state, yeah, for about thirty years now. Um, when we purchased the, uh, land in two thousand and six from the Lathers' family, it was three hundred acres. Um, to put a little perspective, it's right on the edge of the Vernon Marsh. Uh, through that process, um, we worked with the DNR and basically sold off approximately two hundred acres to the marsh and to the long-term forestation. And, uh, that was all part of the process. And as we came forward here in the town and really in late two thousand and nine, early two thousand and ten, uh, we clearly saw and worked through the process, it was a little slow at first, um, but we worked with the town and the county and got to a mutual understanding working with Sewer PAC, um, uh, the Regional Planning Commission, everyone involved in order to look at this piece of property in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. And so in two thousand and twelve, we began the process that changed from agricultural on this piece of property and looked at land use. We took the land use both at the county and the town level, early two thousand and twelve, I'm giving approximate, it might have been late two thousand and eleven, through the process and land use was changed on this and I don't have the exact land uses on the top of my head, but virtually what was three hundred acres is now down to ninety acres. Uh, we basically came up with a land use plan that would allow approximately forty-eight units of some kind on the remaining ninety acres. We came through the spring of two thousand and twelve with a lot of momentum. Several of you, as we talked about, uh, on one side and eastern side of the road, it was approximately one to two acre lots. We planned for approximately forty lots. And on the west side of the road against the river, what we proposed, it's almost a twelve acre piece, so we're not talking about multifamily or condo for any other reason than the product that we had in mind and have had in mind and designed is more of a single-family condo. Um, many of these, we did at the Brandybrook Development over here in Wales. These could be thirty-five hundred, four thousand square foot homes literally, but they are all beyond a parcel. So, we came in two thousand and twelve in July, there was a lot of momentum. We literally were right to the point of debating, should it be twelve units on that side or ten units on that side? Very close to approval to get zoning and that's kind of where this intervened with the opinion that we couldn't do these on a single lot. Then there were some other factors beyond our control for the next eighteen months that, uh, really put us at a standstill. So, specifically, um, I would also say concurrently, uh, it's, this is maybe the most engineered, looked at piece of property I've maybe ever been involved with in twenty-two years in the business. Uh, we dealt with the county, um, with, um, the town, yeah, I mean, the engineering level and the amount of money that's been spent. So, when we are able to come forward, which we hope we will be because we do want to be part of the town of Waukesha and get things moving quickly, um, we're in very, very good shape. A lot of eyes have been upon this. But in Jul- in July, uh, that's where it, uh, as I said, July two thousand and twelve, it slowed down. So, specifically at that point, it was because the reading and the ordinance that there could be no more than one on each lot, several other multiple things, but then ultimately, um, this last nine months, we started working with, uh, Attorney Macy, um, Planner, uh, Jamie and, um, uh, some of you with regards to our plan and getting it moving again. And then, as has been mentioned here already, the shoreline zoning process was early after the lawsuit, but much of that has been cleared and actually our firm is developing in the, in the town of Delafield, we've actually experienced the whole process with the town over shoreline zoning, excuse me, with the county. And, um, um, they worked fabulously with the type of cooperation that this language that's being proposed tonight, um, they followed through to the town of Delafield's wishes and I know that they'll do the same with the town of Waukesha. So, that's kind of where we're at, we're excited, uh, we would, you know, look forward to getting approval on this so we could come back to you with a plan and move forward again through the process. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, uh, very much. We gave Mr. Raditz there a little bit of additional time because I think he was generally speaking to, um, more than one, uh, component of these ordinance revisions that are before us. So, at this point in time, we'll proceed, anyone else who would like to speak in favor of, uh, either one of these provisions or to speak to more than one of them, please come forward. Okay, we'll call another time in case someone's a little bashful. Anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor of any or all of these propositions? Third and last call, anyone want to come forward and speak in favor of these propositions? Okay, then we'll go to the other side of it. Anyone who would like to come forward and speak in opposition to, um, either of these propositions, please come forward. This is getting too easy, second call. Anyone who would like to come forward and speak in opposition to any of these propositions or all these propositions, come forward.
I don't know if this is the right...
Well, just come forward, give us your name and if, if, if not, we'll help you out. But give us your name and address, please. Pull the microphone down just a bit.
Jane, I've got to talk to a lot of...
Well, okay.
Jane Meyer, South fifty-two, W two six five five five, Foxdale Court, Waukesha. I am the farm's north lot line, they are my south lot line. I have the long side of the east part of the development and the only concern that I have is the drainage that they're gonna, where they're gonna put their water. Because the city, which that Fox Lake subdivision, uh, two years ago, they tried to run it through Doug Campbell's and my land, which are in the town of Waukesha, the old barn. For four solid months, my sump pump ran and that's only the third time since I've lived there in thirty-some years. I lived on the Lather farm, that's where I grew up as a child, so I'm very familiar with what goes on here. And so I, my only concern is where the runoff is gonna go.
Okay, let me, i- if, if I can quickly address that...
I don't care if they put condos left or right or...
Let me, i- if I could just quickly respond to you and thank you for coming forth, offering those comments, um, those are really not appropriate at the moment with the public hearing, but, but they are very important considerations, um, assuming, I shouldn't even say assuming, but we're dealing with ordinance changes, revisions at this point in time. Some of this has been precipitated by the specific matter, but these would be ordinance revisions that would apply townwide if they were to be adopted. Um, if and when we get to the point in looking at more in detail...
On the east side.
With the development, then there will be opportunity for citizens' comments, express concerns and so forth, uh, when we get to those. That will not be tonight or not at tonight's meeting, but if that comes forward, um, encourage you to please come back and remind us of your comments.
Oh, I come back every time I, every time I see one.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, please give your name to the developer because they'll meet with you privately and answer those questions long before you don't necessar- you're always welcome to come here, but we ask all the neighbors, the developers know I'm going to say this because they've, I've worked with them in many communities, they should be meeting with you and answering your questions, so please take this opportunity to... And meet with him. Long before he applies, he should be meeting with you in my opinion.
Okay, the city did a very fine job of fixing the water problem, took them a year to do it, but they were running it all through our property and it just made my sump pump run twenty-four seven. So, that's why I'm saying they can't do that because that's the same piece of swamp.
And if he doesn't contact you and meet and talk with you, there's some people up here with pretty sharp memories and were keeping some notes, will know you were here tonight and will ask him about it, okay?
Okay, so this is the person I need to talk to first?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone who would like to come forward and speak in opposition to the multi-part proposition? I think that was second call, third call, anyone who would like to come forward and speak in opposition to the proposition? And I guess finally I'll do it, there have not been a lot of comments really to rebut. Um, I'm assuming if there's not any other comments either for or against the proposition, there is probably no rebuttal. So, uh, with that said, unless there's any other business to before, to come before us, a, a motion to adjourn this public hearing would... Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the public hearing, joint public hearing of the Plan Commission and Town Board, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This public hearing is adjourned, we will begin the Plan Commission momentarily. Thank you.
Good evening again, everybody. Welcome to the Plan Commission Meeting, April ninth, twenty fifteen. I've got six forty-two PM, I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with the roll call.
Bob Flanagan?
President.
Bob Stigler?
Here.
Supervisor Fisher?
Here.
Chairman Merrick?
Present.
Al White?
Here.
Ken Miller?
Here.
Dan Buchholz?
Here.
And Madam Clerk, have we met all of the requirements of the open meetings laws?
Yes, we have.
And we can begin with citizens' comments. Anybody going once, going twice? Then we can move on to the minutes of March twelfth, the public hearing and March twelfth, the Plan Commission Meeting. If there's no...
Are the, um, minutes in front of you? I sent you, um, a correction in the minutes on the second page, uh, the, the last motion, um, was corrected, uh, so you have a golden rod in front of you if you did not read your email.
If there's no objection, we can take these at the same time unless somebody who's not present was... Ken, were you here for that meeting? Well, then we, we can still take them at the same time. Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes with the corrections.
Yeah. Move to approve.
How about a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And abstain? Microphones, please. Motion carries, on to six, discussion and possible action on accessory building for Paul and Trina Nelson. Location is South forty-four, West two twenty-sixty, Sunridge Drive. Planner Ray Barcheck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight are the Nelsens, they're wishing to construct a thirty-foot by thirty-five-foot, so roughly one thousand fifty square foot accessory building on their property. The proposed height is seventeen feet, five inches, measured from the grade to the peak. The appearance of the accessory building is proposed to be compatible with the principal residence regarding building materials, roof pitch and windows. And the proposed accessory building is gonna be used for a storage of personal items. Per our accessory building ordinance, anytime the accessory building exceeds six hundred square feet or exceeds the maximum height per the zoning district, it requires both Town of Waukesha Plan Commission and Board approval. The proposed accessory structure is within the parameters of our ordinance as far as the size. However, the seventeen feet, or seventeen point five feet in height exceeds the height limitations for the R-one zoning district, the height limitation is fifteen feet. However, we do have a provision in our code that says that if you're matching the pitch of the principal residence, you're allowed to exceed the height requirement in the underlying zoning ordinance. And that's what they are doing with their garage. It's actually matching the pitch of the So with that, before you tonight, so choose, as I put together a recommendation for approval, subject to eight conditions in the staff report. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you and the Plan Commission.
Thank you. And do we have the petitioner here this evening? Come on up. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Nelson? Nothing? Do we have a motion?
I have something for the planner, though.
Go ahead.
In your comments here, it says for every foot that it has to go up, it has to go two feet away from, further away from the offsets as well? Is that correct?
To dash eleven C, the height regulation increase permitted. However, we have another provision that's in our ordinance, or it's a standalone section right now. It hasn't been included in the code. And that seven, subparen B, subparen four, where it says height regulation exceptions. And when you use that section of the code where you're actually matching the pitch of your house, you do not need the additional setback.
Because you said the location here, that it was a hundred feet from any of the property lines. And that does not appear to be the case with his, with his drawing. His drawing only shows it twenty feet from the southern property line.
And per the R-one zoning district, the twenty feet is the minimum setback.
So the comments in here are incorrect, then?
The conditions of, yes, the conditions are correct, yes.
I make a motion to approve, subject to all our conditions.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to seven, discussion and possible action on accessory building. The owner is Russell and Marlene Tilzner. Location is West two seventy-six, South thirty-three seventy, Burnell Drive. Planner Ray Barcheck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioners are looking to construct a twenty-foot by thirty-foot accessory building on the subject property. The height is fourteen feet, two inches, measured from grade to peak. The appearance of the accessory building is gonna be compatible with the principal residence with regard to building materials and windows. The accessory building is being used for the storage of personal items. And just like before, anytime an accessory building is six hundred square feet or greater or exceeds a maximum height restriction of the zoning district, it requires Plan Commission and Board approval. This one's fairly straightforward, they're, they're within the parameters of our accessory building ordinance. But again, because it's six hundred square feet, it requires approval of, excuse me, Plan Commission and Board. So if the Plan Commission so desires, I put together a recommendation for approval, subject to six conditions. And I believe the petitioner is, is here. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do any of the Plan Commission members have any questions for Mr. Tilzner?
The height? Actually, after I met with the contractor, I realized it was gonna be, because I was gonna match the pitch of the roof of the house. And then he showed me that, he said, unless you're gonna actually put a room or something up there, you really don't need that height. And it was a bunch of additional cost. So then I, we went back through the different pitches and I said, that's fine, then we'll go with the six by twelve. Because I'm just gonna put some odds and ends up there, I'm not gonna have a room or anything up there, we're just gonna use it for storage. So it was really cost related.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yeah, I've got a question, I guess, I'd like to kinda pass along to Planner Barcheck. It doesn't just uniquely apply to your request or the other ones we've had. But at our last meeting, I mean, even looking at the minutes here, we went through the ordinance change regarding recertification of location for residential or agricultural accessory building. And I know a couple of people may not have been at that meeting, but the essence of that said, the town building inspector shall have the right to request recertification of any structure, location and elevations at any time during the construction or upon completion of the same. And if the town building inspector has reason to question whether the building location and elevation meet the requirement, the building minimum offset, setback or elevation requirements. My question to you, and I realize a lot of this is put in the hands of the building inspector, but when we have petitioners or applicants such as this gentleman coming along, are they builders or what or not? Are we directing their attention at all to the importance of the proper location of this and the potential need for recertification? I'm just, I'm looking for a sense going forward, or do you deem that not to be really part of your responsibility? How do we convey the message so that things do get put in the right place so we don't have to deal with them as problem issues after the fact?
Excuse me, in this particular circumstance, Mr. Tilzner and I did have that conversation. And he, in fact, is having a certify, certified survey map done, or survey done of his property. And he is gonna have it staked for Martin because he does realize that he's very close to the, to the property line. Once the ordinance that was recently approved by the Town Plan Commission and Board, once it's finally approved by the county, which I believe is April twenty-eighth of this month, we will be working that language into the standard conditions for accessory buildings. But at this point, because of when the petition was submitted to us and because the county hasn't taken final action on it, it's not necessarily enforced, the new language. So I felt that I wasn't able to include it in this round of staff reports. But as soon as that's approved, we will be making that a standard condition.
Anything further? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to our conditions.
In a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this point, I am going to turn this back over to Supervisor Fisher to chair the balance of the Plan Commission Meeting.
Okay, item eight on the Plan Commission agenda is a discussion and possible action. Text zoning changes, the petitioner, all uppercase, F-R-E-D hyphen Lathers, comma, L-L-C. Property address, seven eighty-nine North Water, Street Suite two hundred, Milwaukee. And the subject matter before us is what was the subject matter of the public hearing? The ordinance to repeal and recreate Title thirteen, entitled zoning chapter two, title general provisions, section thirteen dash two dash five, entitled site regulations. That's the master caption, thirteen dash two dash nine, entitled conditional uses pertaining to subsection thirteen dash two dash nine. Parenths, I, closed parenths, entitled conditional use permitted. And section thirteen dash three dash one, entitled establishment of districts, amendments to the Town of Waukesha Municipal Code. So at this point in time, this is open for discussion and possible action by the Plan Commission.
Commissioner Miller, please begin.
Under C one two three and D one two three, where did the, where the square footages, where do they derive from? Is that from something previously or just boilerplate or what is that?
Those standards that you see have been standards that I have used in other communities for multifamily development. The one thousand square feet for roughly one bedroom, two bedrooms seems to be the standard for, through the U.S. Census. So that's, you know, basically where it's derived from. Again, I've used it in other communities and it seems to be holding up with the standard for development that we've been seeing.
Actually wrong, I just meant one in each, I was reading incorrectly. Do we, do we necessarily agree with that? In general, Plan Commissioners? It just seems a little antiquated, as far as the square footages are concerned.
Would you suggest something other than that?
Yeah, I would suggest, first of all, on the, on the, on the one-bedroom units, that they should be considerably smaller. Because there's, there's so much new technology, so much new design, that nine hundred square feet is probably one of the larger one-bedrooms that you would ever have. If we're looking for a minimum, it should be probably about seven fifty. Two-bedroom, maybe nine fifty, and the three-bedroom is fine. But I can't hardly argue with the census, I mean, if that's where they were derived from. And this is, what I'm using is market-driven numbers more than census.
I agree with my fellow commissioner. However, we tried to make a blanket that covers everything in the future. I agree with you, but a lot of the units are considerably smaller. They're, they're, you know, existing in markets all over the country. But this gives a little bit more leeway. I remember when we established this, that we wanted to make these units just a tad larger.
What did you suggest for, for the two-bedroom one?
So if I heard you right, it's one bedroom is seven fifty, two-bedroom is nine fifty, and three-bedroom was eleven hundred?
Yep, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have to advise the commission that if we reduce the size, we would have to have a new public hearing. If you increase the size, you, you know, and I'm not, it's just a legal thing. If somebody read it and they said, well, they're not changing it. The other thing I would say is that, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Planner, but those numbers are elsewhere in the code, aren't they? Is this the only place that those numbers appear? I don't wanna have an inconsistency in the code, where in one place it may way say, I mean, it's not that you can't say that you wanna have the next round, we check the code and bring that numbers back everywhere in that code. I have no problem, conceptually, legally, the notice we gave said this. Ironically, you could increase the size because you're, but you can't decrease the size based on the notice that we gave. Because somebody could say, well, I don't care if they put nine hundred square feet next to me, but I would have cared if I'd known that they were gonna put seven fifty next to me. Understand the thinking? So I think this is good discussion, and I think the planner needs to know what your thoughts are in that regard. All of you can chime in, and then you can tell us whether next time we do an amendment, we bring back that concept also. We can certainly do that.
In, in brief, it would seem to me that if it has to be changed, it'll probably be changed by somebody with a submittal. Meaning as in someone will come along with a plan and it'll be lesser, as opposed to greater. And then we can change it at that time, I guess, if it, if it needs to be. I mean, there's also an argument that this is still, you know, rural environment compared to urban environment. You know, because also the garage requirement and the parking requirement are a little larger than normal, too. So I guess, leave it. We're not gonna go through another public hearing, I don't think.
Who else?
Can you explain to us, Jamie, the, the maximum floor area ratio at one and a half times? What does that mean? Give us an example so we understand what that means. I know later on, for, for a larger unit, it's two times. Can you put that in perspective, tell me what that means?
So for, if you are wanting to do a multifamily unit as a CUP in, let's say, the R-one zoning district. So if you go to the, let me get there real quick. So in the R-one zoning district, the maximum floor area ratio for the lot, so that would be the building itself, driveway, et cetera, is fifteen percent. But that's for a single residence on the property. In this case, you're
Does that matter how big the property is, if it's one acre or three acres, or it's still fifteen percent?
It's fifteen percent of the lot, whatever the lot size is.
Okay.
So in this case, you're now putting a duplex on that same lot. And in theory, it could be twice the size of, or almost up to twice the size of the single residence that's there. So in most of the codes that you look at, when you put the duplex on there, they require a percentage or an increase of that floor area ratio. These percentages came from the county code, both in floor area ratio and also in lot size to accommodate for the duplex.
Okay, and then how does that work in relation to the comment about open space requirements?
In this case, the open space for the R-one is thirty thousand square feet per, per residence.
Jamie, just as a specific example back, then even one of the maximum floor area ratio, if the district we're looking at is fifteen and a half percent, then we're saying in this instance, the maximum should be one and a half times fifteen or twenty-two and a half? I mean, is that the math on it effectively?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Then we move down to, to D, number two, density not to exceed fifteen dwelling units per acre. How does that number come about?
Well, that, we looked at the surrounding communities. So in the comparison, we looked at town of Brookfield, town of Lisbon, town of Merton, city of Waukesha, city of New Berlin, Waukesha County. And we not only looked at their, in most cases, those communities actually had a multifamily district. So we looked at the multifamily district, and then we also looked at their PUD sections because some of the multifamily can be done through a standalone district or it can be done through the PUD, which we don't necessarily have that option in our PUD because our PUD is more for single-family residential development. So we looked at those open spaces, and then we looked at the density that the town allows for the senior housing. And we came up with the fifteen units per acre. allows for the senior housing and we came up with, uh, the fifteen units, uh, per acre. But again, that was just, you know, looking at, uh, surrounding, um, communities, what some of the newer developments, um, are getting as far as density. And that's the development or that's the, uh, the number we came up with. You know, if the plan commission thinks that it should be ten or it should be twelve.
That was the question I wrote here. Why didn't we choose ten or twelve instead of fifteen? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at same thing that, that he said down there that this is a rural area. It's not an urban area and if we want to maintain it more rural, we want to keep the density a little bit lesser. I understand that, yeah, we're looking at multi-family, but you start packing fifteen units per acre, that's pretty urban to me.
Well, and this is also looking at our borders. I mean, this isn't something that's going to happen in the-
Correct.
-central part of the town. It's got to be in close proximity to, uh, an arterial road where you have the high traffic hounds and then also close enough that it can have sewer and water.
I'm more comfortable with having twelve rather than fifteen.
Yes, Commissioner Miller?
If you really want to do it, um, I don't know if the right words correctly, you'd want to do it incrementally, um, strictly my opinion. If you're next to QuickTrip, fifteen is probably appropriate. If you're next to the church on Lonsdale and one sixty-four, maybe eight is appropriate. You know, it varies, varies a lot incrementally depending on where you're located.
On what kind of site you're on.
And, and what, what's surrounding it, you know, industrial versus residential. Residential, you probably have people in here packing this place and you had more than eight units per acre next to them.
Uh, that's what I was considering.
It just unfortunately, I'm going to do another public hearing before you're going to change it again, I guess.
According to the attorney.
No, ironically, uh-
Oh.
You can go that way.
You can go that way.
Oh, and I would strongly suggest that be changed then.
If we're going down.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you're putting more next to the people, if you're putting less than what they would have read in the paper.
Well, you can, you can label it as low, medium and high density and go with eight, twelve and fifteen accordingly and it'd be probably pretty common.
Would we have to make some kind of definitions to go with those then?
That's not for me to decide. I mean, just the term low, medium and high is, is pretty normal.
This, this states fifteen is the maximum, but doesn't, can't we change that if they come in with their proposal and, and go less in, in their proposal at the time, what their plan is brought to the board?
Like I said-
The answer to that is yes, because it's a conditional use. So they don't necessarily have an inherent right to the density. They have the right to the density subject to reasonable conditions placed upon it. And it could be the plan commission and the board that makes the determination or the finding that based on the location, the fifteen dwelling units just doesn't make sense. But eight or ten or twelve, uh, based on landscaping, open space, uh, surrounding character of the development might make more sense than the fifteen. So to answer your question is that, yes, the plan commission and the board on a case-by-case basis could lower the density, um, based on those factors.
I've been here long enough though, that I find that it's, when you say fifteen, it's a lot harder for us to go down and restrict it than it is if we say that it's got to be less. And there's been folks that have come in and asked for things because that's what it says we can do. And we have a tough time defending our decision to go less than what it says you can do. I'd feel more comfortable with a, with a gradient as, as has been suggested.
Sure, go ahead.
The other problem, I don't think we have an actual overall plan as to where multi-family would or could or should go. Normally if you had a, um, an overall town or city plan, it would show multi-family in several areas and it would designate then at that point to be low, medium or high density. And without having that, that ultimate zoning plan, I don't know that we can. I, I think Dan's right. They're all going to come in with fifteen units to the acre and it'll be up to us to slash them, which is going to be a challenge, I would think. I don't know. Everybody wants to maximize the usage because they're paying much, whatever, they justify it based on economics, but.
I think though that the answer to that question is that based on the provisions or way that the ordinance is written, I, I don't think that there are that many potential properties in the town that are located off of the arterial and can be served by both municipal sewer and water. So I think that's something to kind of take into, into consideration.
Aren't, aren't these PUDs what basically what you're proposing here? Does the zoning come into effect then? I mean, the zoning really, you don't have to have the exact zoning then, you know, PUD is a-
Well, the, the difference here though is that the towns code, the PUD section for the towns code only talks about single-family residential. It doesn't talk about multi-family being done as a PUD. The towns code has a separate section for multi-family. So that's why we couldn't address it, uh, under the PUD. If we could, then we probably wouldn't be here tonight talking about amendments to this section because we would have the added flexibility in the PUD section to address multi-family developments. But unfortunately, the way that our PUD ordinance is written, it's catered towards the single family.
Well, I'm in Dan's corner. I think that ten units an acre, first of all, I think we're talking, as you say, we're talking about something that's all hypothetical at this point because we don't have the kind of sites that we're going to be building on anyway. But in the event that that would happen, uh, ten units an acre in a town of Waukesha, it'd be a pretty good density. And, uh, I agree also that if you, you go to fifteen, they'll want fifteen and it's hard to come down. So, but as long as we have control, I, it, I'm not too concerned.
Commissioner White?
I also agree with Dan, with Dan at his sake because that, I, I'm with you with fifteen, they're going to come with fifteen and somehow we're going to explain why we won't give them fifteen. So I'm also, uh, looking to downsize that to a different number of ten or twelve. We can talk about that. I'd like to go back to section two, paragraph C, um, line one. I'm in all favor of leaving it as is. I think, um, we had discussions prior, um, in the past of having the, the square footage and I think Mr. Miller talked about the rural factor of, of how we would like to see the town look. And I think the square footage is stay as is and I'd be favorable with that. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Do we need to make motions to make changes to this or what do you, how do you deal with that?
Well, I think, I think what, um, I, I think what would be in order is for someone to make a motion and I think the motion should include any changes that you propose to make. I think that's a proper way to start with it. I suppose someone can propose an amendment to that motion, but I think anybody who's prepared to make a motion, you should include the changes and Attorney Macy's given us good counsel on what you can and cannot do. I think they should be part of the motion.
Well, in that case, in, in section D, number two, the density, I would propose that the motion that we use, uh, low, medium and high density and set those numbers at, at eight, ten and twelve.
Second.
If, if I might just ask, are you, does your motion then include, um, a motion to approve these ordinance changes with that modification to them as they are presented?
No, that's just to modify that one item.
You just want to take that part of it.
Just that one item, correct for now. Because I think, I don't know if we're done yet discussing the whole thing.
Okay.
I would recommend if we don't, I think your chairman has indicated that we can make amendments to it later if other people, but the motion really should be to adopt all of it except for, and I want to be very specific, I think it's D two, if I'm correct?
Correct.
And you'd like it to read and, and the planner may have to help me because we don't have definitions of these, you know, um, pardon?
That was going to be my comment is I don't know how we would gauge low, medium and high density. We would have to create definitions within the section to identify those versus if we just lowered it from fifteen dwelling units per acre to ten.
Your question basically is if we do that, how do we know where those are to be applied? I mean, is that the essence of it?
How are they to be applied and, and what is the definition or what is the character of each one of those areas?
You know, because this is just the tip of the iceberg, but you need a, you need a comprehensive plan that shows where each of the three would be designated then. And I don't think we have, do we have that in mind?
Not at this point in time.
If we were actually going to designate the areas, then modifying the conditional use section is not the way to go. You would actually have to create a new zoning district for the multi-family and work with the county and creating that district and the location of that district. Our thought here was to work within the, uh, parameters of what we have in place now.
Are you saying that we, and I agree with our counsel, we should approve this in total and then we fine tune it down the road? Is that what we're saying?
It, it, we just suggested, in fact, it was your, your chairman who said, we should have a motion to adopt something. And you can, and, and so I'm asking the maker of the motion whether he would, well, I guess clarifying the motion would have been to just say all of it, I'm going to move all of it except for I want to change the language of D two. And we're talking about what the language of D two would have to be and, you know, and his suggestion that we have the, the three tiers is problematic from a planning and a legal standpoint because we don't have a definition of what those three tiers are. And then one of your commissioners also raised, well, if you're really going to do it right, you should have it in your comprehensive plan, your master plan, which are the low, medium and high density. And then the planner said, and if you're really going to do it really right, then they should be zoning districts. So that's been the discussion so far. I'm not sure we have an actual second to this motion yet, but I think this is good discussion.
I think I'm going to withdraw my motion at this point. Take off the table.
Can, can I just maybe weigh in on the, the discussion here for a minute? I think there's really some good thoughts that everybody's brought forward. The big picture that I think we're looking at this, and while I will, um, support these proposed ordinance revisions, leaving aside a minute, some of the tuning that we're talking about possibly doing, um, is because I think a lot of discussion about trying to maintain the, um, town land, the, if you want to call it territorial integrity of the town, so much, over so many years of the town has been lost to develop that is, development that has gone to the city. And I think part of the reason, uh, of that has been an attempt to protect large lot sizes and low densities and the charm and allure of the rural character of the town. We've invited a lot of that land to go to the city with annexation where it can be developed with higher densities. There's more profitability than that people are developing. So I, I'm all with the spirit of trying to do, um, some of these things and, um, obviously the application, this needs to be done so that it does not have significant impact on those things that are good about the town, the allure, at least the semi-rural character and nature of it. Part of what I think we're dealing with here a little bit is the town does have a little bit different characteristics to it. Those parts that are closer to the city and on arterials and so forth probably are appropriate for, um, higher densities and so forth. So the question is how do we put that into some kind of an ordinance? If, just for sake of discussion, if we were to, and I'll argue for a minute to leave that, get fifteen dwelling units per acre maximum, just for sake of discussion and hearing that that may not be appropriate. Some places, the future plan commissions and boards then would need to have the strength, if you will, to, to say no in certain instances, that's too high. I mean, I absolutely think that we need, if we're looking at these type of things, to have people come for conceptual approvals. If people invest a great deal of time in planning resources and so forth to try to go to a higher number and then come forth and the plan commission or town board is not on board with it, it's, it's frustrating, takes a lot of time and energy. So, um, Jamie, you might have a thought about that, but I mean, if we're going to get into this type of thing and there will be some instances in which some discretion can be used, then I think it's absolutely essential to have people come forth with conceptual approval of that type of thing so they don't invest a lot of, um, time and money unnecessarily. So that's it.
We've got to go back. The clerk has reminded me that there was a, a second. So does the second also withdraw for, for this process? He's withdrawn. I just want to can-
I'm sorry, I didn't, thank you. I didn't, I didn't realize that.
That was okay. No, I didn't realize it either.
Okay.
I might have a suggestion and I don't know if it's palatable, but based on the discussion, it would, would, instead of us ranking them low, medium and high, would you rank them that they're contiguous to an incorporated municipality and they're not contiguous to an incorporated municipality? Because possibly if they're in contiguous to incorporated municipality, I'm speaking to what the chair was, uh, just saying, you're hoping that they won't annex. And maybe you would have a certain number, the maximum density, if it's contiguous to incorporated municipality is one number. And if it's not contiguous to incorporated, then we don't have to at this point, you know, do the master plan changes. We don't have to do the tiers, the definition of the tiers. I'm just trying to find a solution for tonight that might work for what you're accomplishing. And I don't know if the numbers are eight, eight and ten or ten and twelve or, or what the numbers are, but there certainly seems to be, the impetus behind this, we're not kidding anybody, I, I don't think, the impetus is behind this is to try to keep the developments in the community. And so we did remove that as drafting, that it doesn't have to be contiguous, that you will look to these potentially, but you may say in those instances, eight is the maximum if it's not contiguous to an incorporated municipality. But that would be a distinction without having to write, go ahead, the planner has a comment.
Well, my follow-up comment to that was if they're not contiguous to, um, a city, does that also assume though that they're still getting municipal sewer and water?
Perhaps. You have that in here, don't you?
Right.
Yeah, and I wasn't suggesting changing anything else.
That remains.
That remains.
So, so following on the suggestion might be that we leave it at a maximum density of fifteen dwelling units per acre for any property which is contiguous to another municipality and, uh, maximum of ten dwelling units per acre for those that are not contiguous or something to that effect?
I was just throwing that out as a potentiality, but I would, you know, I'm not trying to put words in it. And again, I don't want to suggest the numbers. That's a policy decision. But in it's, it's incorporated municipalities, the phraseology you want to use, the mere fact that they're next to the town of Genesee or the town of Brookfield is immaterial. They're not, they're not annexing to the town of Brookfield or the town of, uh, of Genesee, so. So incorporated municipality. So, Mr. Chairman, if we might, could we find out if that, that's a feeling of a distinction that people are comfortable with?
Sure, weigh in.
I'll weigh in. Some contiguous zones in my, in my game sound very good and telling people to do. So I'm in favor of that.
I'm, yeah, I agree.
If we have a consensus or the majority feel that's a good distinction, then we just have to talk the number. I didn't want to confuse the two, but I wanted to lay out the whole program. If we think that's a good way to distinguish between them, then we could talk about what's the appropriate number for each. I don't know of a third category. Chief, if, if, if you can help me think of a third category, I'd make three of them for you, but I can only think of, it's either contiguous or it's not contiguous, but, uh...
So step at a time for all the commissioners, contiguous or non-contiguous? Does it make sense to make that differentiation?
To be honest, I haven't bought into that yet.
Okay.
I, I, I'm leaning towards it, but there could be opportunities where that doesn't work.
What if, just get rid of it completely and let it be case by case? And most of them are going to be PUD, which the density is all relative at that point and we can, we're not, we're not stuck with a number. It'd be much easier to justify having no number than it would be to try and tell somebody they can have less than what the maximum is after. Is there a reason we can't get rid of it?
Point of clarification is that you can't use the PUD section of the ordinance for multi-family. Cannot. That's why we have a separate conditional use section for multi-family. The way that our PUD ordinance is written is it's only for single-family.
This isn't just a two-minute discussion. This isn't just a two-minute discussion. This is a, this is a huge deal. Whatever, I just, I don't see that you can decide tonight what this magic number is going to be for the town of Wachshut. I mean, it varies from city to city, from urban to rural to whatever. It's just, it's.
I believe in Attorney Macy, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we are compelled to act upon this tonight, are we?
No, your options are, I will have to check the code quickly, how long from the public hearing the plan commission has to make a recommendation. Do we know the answer to that or can we quickly check that, gentlemen? So, no, but, and I don't want to suggest one thing or another. I mean, you can also move ahead with one and three, you can, you know, you have all the different options on your recommendation.
Maybe while they're researching that, it seems like the one that's most removed from that would be the third part, I think. Would anybody like to speak to your pleasure on that?
I have, I have one more thing if we can go back to number two here. Letter F under D, DEF. We're changing the existing ordinance from requiring a two-car attached garage to each unit. We're changing it to a one-car attached or detached. And I understand going down in size. I don't really object to that, but I do object to the detached. They said even in our single-family areas, we require an attached garage. Why are we putting detached in there?
The thought was that potentially you could have a multifamily building where the garages are not underground, but they are in a bay of garages that's detached from the building. So you would ultimately get one space per unit and then one surface space. But you could potentially have a development, again, depending on location, depending on architectural requirements and landscaping. But in theory, you could have the garages be detached from the apartment building and they could be in a, kind of in a bay fashion.
That's if you're talking about more than like a two-family unit or something like that.
Sure, per the density, if you're getting sewer and water, you could have one thirty unit building.
But if you have just a two-family, single unit. I guess, is there a way to define between the two? I mean, if we just have a two-family unit, I'd prefer to see it look more like a single-family residential area and have attached garages as opposed to having a cluster of garages built out in the backyard.
I understand your comment. So yeah, we could separate it if we wanted to, that a duplex requires a minimum two-car attached garage. And then if it's a multifamily unit building, we could go with this provision that's here.
When you say duplex, duplex per unit, that's two cars per unit, it's actually a four-car garage?
That's correct. Each unit would have to have a two-car, yeah.
That's pretty kind of, and a two-family.
I think that's something we should put in there.
So we talked about the duplex requiring a one-car attached or a two-car?
Two-car per unit.
Two-car per unit?
Just like our old ordinance, so, yeah. I absolutely hear what you're saying. I wouldn't be surprised if Mr. Macy may weigh in in a bit and tell us whether we have the prerogative to make those changes after we've conducted the public hearing or not?
Well, that one's a little tougher, thank you, Mr. Chairman. But I guess my gut reaction is you've made it more restrictive. You've made it more, more, you've gone from one indoor parking space and one surface parking space, as I understand it, to two attached parking spaces merely for duplexes only or? I think that's within your power to do because the public would find that to be more palatable in most instances and less obstructive, you know. It's always whether it's more restrictive or less restrictive when you're trying to decide if you need a new public hearing.
So when we're talking about the two-car attached unit, we are not talking about the minimum of one surface parking as well?
Correct. Well, we've got many things on the table now, don't we? Well, do you want to give a shot? Did we do the ordinance?
We got, we got to get wording on that one, though. I mean, if you've got exact wording, that's great. I haven't written up, I'm still checking to see how long we have to act.
Let's give, let's give Mr. Macy just a quick minute here to research that. And if you want, maybe even Commissioner Miller, if you got a motion, maybe just a little bit, write it out a bit. I mean, this is important enough. I think we're going to have the clerk take it verbatim or whatever so we make sure we've got it cleaned up. I'll give him a minute to look at the ordinance.
Should we move on to number three while we're waiting? Should we move on to number three?
I think that'd be good, let's do that.
I actually only have one comment on number three.
Good. We'll go ahead?
In the underlined section, it'd be the third full line down. It says the area regulations for on the entire lot, that doesn't make any sense. What's that supposed to say?
I think the word on goes out, I looked at that as well. Is that just an extra word? It should be for the entire lot?
Remove the word on?
Okay, let's assume you remove the word on, that simple clerical thing. Any other comments with regard to that third part thirteen dash three dash one? Is there anyone that has a concern or objection about that?
Mr. Chairman, in checking section thirteen dash two dash twenty-two and title changes and amendments, I find no time restriction as to when the plan commission has to act. Once the procedure of the public hearing's been held, it just says the plan commission and the town board should not act until they get the recommendation. So it would be a reasonable time. The answer, the legal answer would be within a reasonable time, the plan commission must make a recommendation to the town board.
Okay, then it would appear to me that the options before us of this matter could be tabled and be taken up again at a reasonable period of time. We could have time to consider these things. That could be the recommendation to the town board to table. Recommendation could be made to make a motion for the adoption of, recommend the town board to adopt these provisions with changes that Attorney Macy has indicated would be within our prerogative to make at this point in time. So I'll leave that to you. Are you prepared to make a motion, Commissioner Miller?
I would make the motion that we adopt, don't have to designate all the different numbers.
Well, why don't you just let it go as ordinance number twenty fifteen dash two at this point in time? And I think that everybody knows and the clerk knows that embodies all of it.
So said, I would personally eliminate D two completely and change F to be two-car attached per unit on a duplex.
I guess I, well, is there a second to motion?
Second.
Okay, second to motion question now, I think I guess then even back to Attorney Macy. If D two is stricken, do we have the prerogative to act on that recommendation to town board tonight that would not have a restriction on the density of number of dwelling units per acre?
If I'm understanding the motion correctly, I think I'd have to rule no because then it's unlimited.
So we do not have the prerogative to do that?
You can't, you can't take it out totally because then it would be, the neighbors would, you'd have forty or fifty or, you know, or a hundred units and inappropriate, if the plan commission felt it appropriate. But you have no guidance there whatsoever. So I think that's less restrictive and so you'd have to have a new public hearing.
Okay, could I then ask the second of the motion and the maker of the motion to withdraw with that said and take another shot at it?
So spoke.
Okay.
I don't know who's the second.
I'm second, I'm the second.
Okay, so let's take another pass.
I don't think we've ever come to a conclusion on D two.
I'll take a pass at this.
For the plan commission, the language that I kind of had typed, I think, when Attorney Macy spoke was, the density shall not exceed fifteen dwelling units per acre if contiguous to an incorporated municipality and shall not exceed ten dwelling units per acre if not contiguous to an incorporated municipality. I think that's, was kind of the comment that Attorney Macy had mentioned.
Commissioner Wolf, were you headed there or some other place?
I'll make a motion that we table this till our next meeting with direction to the planner to come up with the language for D two, setting the maximum density requirement and changing the language in F to reflect two-car attached garages with duplexes.
Okay, I, is there, I'm just going to clarify, the motion will be to, we understand the direction. The motion simply is to table. Is there a second to the motion? And this is a recommendation to the town board to table. Is there a second to that motion?
I don't quite understand why we need to table. We're talking about two or three issues, I guess.
We want to make sure we get the language right, though, and I don't think we're going to do that right now. Anybody choose to second the motion to table? I'll second the motion. And there will be no further discussion at this time. So the motion is to recommend tabling to the town board. All in favor, go ahead.
Just one comment. Would the plan commission be open to approving section one and section three with regard to the Lathers' property and then tabling section two, the multifamily, for additional comments?
I hate to separate them, it's one ordinance, in all honesty. We published it and to piecemeal it.
Section one references in sections two, too, so you really can't do that. So we need really to proceed to the vote without further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, which is to recommend to the town board the tabling of ordinance number twenty fifteen dash two, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Flanagan has noted as opposed. At this point in time, that will conclude the discussion and possible action on text zoning code changes. A motion for adjournment of the plan commission meeting would be in order?
So hope.
Second, moved by Commissioner Stigler, second by Commissioner Buchholz. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. We'll take a break for five minutes plus and resume with the town board meeting at quarter to eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening again, everybody, and welcome to the town board meeting, April nine, twenty fifteen, beginning at seven forty-five. I'd like to call a meeting to order and begin with the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Dur?
Here.
Supervisor Fisher?
Here.
Chairman Merrick?
Present.
Supervisor Radke?
Here.
Supervisor Wolf?
Here.
And Madam Clerk, have we met all of the, complied with all the rules of the open meetings law?
Yes, we have.
And we can begin with citizens' comments? Going once, going twice. Then we can move on to the minutes of March twenty-six, twenty fifteen.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from March twenty-sixth.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. On to six plan commission items, discussion and possible action on the accessory building for Paul and Trina Nelson. Recommendation from the plan commission was to approve with the conditions set forth by Planner Rebar. the conditions set forth by Planner Ray Barcheck.
I'll move to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To B, discussion and possible action on the accessory building for Russell and Marlene Tilzner, West two seventy-six, South thirty-three seventy, Burnell Drive. The recommendation from the Plan Commission was to approve with Planner Ray Barcheck's conditions. Is there a motion?
I move we approve this per Plan Commission recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I am going to turn this over to Supervisor Fisher to chair this portion of the meeting.
Item six C is discussion and possible action on the text zoning changes. This is what was discussed at the public hearing earlier this evening and at the Plan Commission level. This is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero-two. I think I can dispense with reading all of the detailed citations of the section of our ordinance. We can, I would, I would just caution you, if you want to discuss this, we need to have discussion before any possible recommendation to accept the Plan Commission's recommendation, because a, a motion to table will effectively cut off discussion. So I simply offer that to you and proceed.
Comment? Mr. Macy, it was brought up to me by a citizen tonight. Should have the public hearing announcement had the property address, not the company's address in Milwaukee? He did not think it was right that they didn't know what property they were dealing with and the address in the property was in Milwaukee?
That's an excellent question, but the, and the answer would be no, they're the petitioners. The company is the petitioner for a text amendment. There is no property. The mere fact that they own a property and that they want, we all know that they're making the request of the amendment in order to use the same when they come in for the property. It would not, you would not show that property, would be inappropriate to show that property, because this ordinance applies to the entire town. And I wouldn't want someone to think that the ordinance only applied to that property. So that's why they spoke of the property and why they were doing it, but that's why you did not see, and I don't know that there is, a sketch of where the houses lie and how the lots lie.
Right, and that was one of his other complaints. There was no plot map or nothing that was being talked about.
And we should have probably, if that was a concern, I, it would have been nice if they'd come up and asked that, because we would have explained, there would be another public hearing notice to the, the adjoining property owners. I think it's merely a coincidence, possibly, that that woman who's been following it, the adjoining property owner, but no, we would have told them, no, that would, we wouldn't want the property of the address, because we don't want to mislead anybody that it doesn't apply to the entire town.
Did that answer your question, Supervisor Wolf?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions, discussion, comments?
I just have a comment to make. I, I know everybody seemed to get hung up on the number of units per lot. And I think it's important to remember that in the past and probably in the future, that if we don't adopt something, the landowner does have the right to annex to the neighboring municipality, which happens all too frequently. Had we not made an exception for the elderly housing unit off of Sunset, they would have annexed to the city. He did it for his other property when he didn't get his way with town ordinances that were in place. So if you get too restrictive and say, we don't want any type of multi-units, all they're gonna do is annex to the city, because the landowner has that right, and there's nothing we can do about it. So I just want everybody to be aware that that does stand out there.
And I just offer one comment. That, I think in a nutshell, that is part of what has been the history of the town of Waukesha and annexations for decades. That's the reality. That's the history of it, from my perspective.
I agree. And we can be as restrictive as we want. In my backyard used to be a, a cornfield and a, and an airstrip. And they didn't get their way and wanted to put in multi-unit housing, they annexed to the city. So it was easily traded. And you can't stop that once they start that process. So keep that in mind, that if we get too restrictive and, and too tight on what we want to have built there, that can and often is the option. So I'm in favor of postponing it till the next Plan Commission meeting, but I think that's important to keep that in mind.
Other, other comments from supervisors here? You heard a lot of discussion again about that density issue and about the garage issue and so forth. Any comments anybody would like to make at this point in time that Planner Barcheck and others might hear?
Yeah, I think it's gonna, what Chief Buckle said, I think we need to, in my opinion, keep them attached, so that they look more like urban, rural residential instead of urban and apartment looking. And from my opinion, I think fifteen is too high. I've got subdivision behind my house. They're closer than I want, but I had no choice, because they developed it. But I do, think people should not have to put up with density of fifteen apartment buildings in an acre when they've lived in the town of Waukesha their whole life or the majority of their life.
Supervisor Wolf, just a, a question to you and thanks for your thoughts on that. Does the, there was a discussion about a different standard or different density level for properties that would be contiguous to incorporated municipalities than the rest of the town? Does that have any appeal to you at all or not?
That could be a possibility. The only thing I don't see is how you're gonna get sewer and water in and still keep it the town. We found out that's not the case with the city. I don't know what town Brookfield will do, or I don't see how they're gonna get city and water to the Lathers property, because as far as I know, there's no city that touches that. So I don't see how they're gonna get city and water and sewer without annexing in, because we found last year that that's the case.
But as Attorney Macy pointed out, it's important to remember, we're not talking about the Lather properties. We're making some policy decisions. And if a developer can figure out how to get city, water and sewer without being contiguous, that's something we have to take into account.
Oh, I'll agree with that.
And I don't want there any confusion. Lathers petitioned for the whole thing. And Lathers is proposing two families, two-family unit maximum, or one family? Single family?
Single family for Lathers, and Lathers is not doing sewer and water.
Yeah, they have, they're, they're proposing a shared, which is legal, two units sharing one septic system and one well, two of the houses, or each house having their own. I thought that was the proposal.
That hasn't been determined yet. They're still working out that level of engineering.
But they will not be on municipals sewer and water. I don't want there any confusion.
But on, we believe their proposal is on a single lot, correct?
That is correct. The west side of their development, they will have potentially eight building pads on one lot.
Okay. Are, you've referred to act, or do you have other things you choose to discuss?
I'll make a recommendation to accept, excuse me, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission to table this.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. The motion is to accept the recommendation of the Town Plan Commission to table any action on ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero-two. That motion's been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that can, that concludes that item. Shall we return Chairman Merrick? We have some new business items to take up next under item seven on the agenda for the Town, Town Board. We're at item, item seven, Chairman Merrick.
Thank you. Item seven, discussion and possible action on the following: Appointments to the Plan Commission, A; Appointment to the Board of Review, B; C, Appointment to Board of Appeals; and Appointment of the Weed Commissioner and Fire Commission. I would like to table these items to our next regular meeting. If there would be a motion?
I'll make a motion to table items seven, A through E till the Town Board meeting on two weeks from tonight.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto F, road striping. And I believe that's you, Commissioner, Supervisor Durk?
That is me. Last page of your packet has some information on road striping. Turns out that this probably didn't need to be on the agenda, as it's part of the regular DPW budget. In the spirit of transparency, thought that we could discuss it anyway. Anybody could contribute if they have some opinions. The information we got from the county is that they will stripe our roads for us at a cost of $500 per mile. That's the cost for yellow striping. That includes single yellow. Well, there is no single, solid yellow. That would include double yellow, double yellow solid, solid and dashed or dashed. So the price is all the same, depending, regardless of what you choose. Then the second column is for white. It's essentially, it's, their quote was for $305 a mile, but it is for each side of the road, so it's essentially $610 a mile. The recommendation of the DPW supervisor is to do the roads that are listed. Big Bend Road, that typo was my error, not his. So that's Big Bend Road from Highway fifty-nine to Town Line Road. So that's essentially all of Big Bend Road. Town Line Road from Highway one sixty-four to Oakdale, and then Town Line Road again from Highway fifty-nine to Wernway. Glenn Gary Road from Guthrie to Marcel. Merrill Hills Road from Highway fifty-nine to Sunset and MacArthur from TT to Comanche. If we would do yellow striping in those areas, it would be a total cost of forty-three fifty. There's no private road company out there that will touch it for anything more than like three times this cost, so seems to be a very modest amount. It's in our budget. We had discussion about budgeting about $20,000 for road striping. So it comes in substantially under budget. My recommendation would be to do the yellow only and dispense with the white. Like I said, I don't think we need a motion or a vote, but if somebody has a different opinion, I would certainly entertain that.
Is this something that would be done within the next month or two, or do we have any sense on that?
We don't.
Done this summer, when they get to it?
When they get to it. You get to contact the county, and it would certainly be done before snowfalls. If we would contact the county now, I would expect it probably to be done before September first. The sooner you get on their schedule, the better. But they, they're not in the business of giving you a definitive date.
Question? So they just go around and they'll do roads as they're doing their own, obviously?
I suspect that they would do all of our roads at one time, but I don't know that for sure.
Anything further?
Okay, so my intent is to do the yellow striping only. Very good. That's all that I have. Thank you.
And let's move on to eight, authorization of payment of the bills. Sorry. All right, we've got a total excluding Rukert-Melkey of one hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred thirteen and ninety-five cents. Is there a motion?
I move we pay that amount.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And two thousand nine hundred ninety-one and fifteen for Rukert-Melkey.
I'll make the motion we pay it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Epstein?
Aye.
Motion carries. And lastly, for adjournment.
I'll make the motion we adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.
So Larry, what's with the complaint against my chef?